All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, October 21st, 2024, and ask you if at all, please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Tanalia?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Dunington?
Here.
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have just one set to approve tonight. That's from our village board meeting of October 7th, 2024. Are there any changes or passes?
I'll move approval of the village board meeting minutes from October 7th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Schwingback. Is that right? Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next we have the approval of the accounts payable, and I call on trustee Bertucci.
Mayor, I move approval of the warrant register for the check date 10/15/2024 in the amount of $4,720,491.
Second.
A motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Tanalia. Questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Dunington?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Well, next, under recognitions and communications, we do have a very special proclamation to present and read this evening. This is the Village of Arlington Heights proclamation recognizing World Polio Day, October 24th, 2024. And our Rotary Club here in the Village of Arlington Heights has been very, very active in addressing this issue, not just in our community and our immediate area, but around the world. And so, we very much appreciate the involvement of our Rotary Club and its members in trying to eradicate polio in our time. And so, we very much appreciate all the work that they've done over many, many years now. We do have representatives from our Rotary Club here with us this evening. And we also have a couple of Rotary members on our village board and staff, including trustee Bertucci and village manager Randy Recklaus. And so, I'm very proud to be an honorary Rotarian myself. And so, appreciate everyone who's been involved in the Rotary Club International for however many years that they've been. And I know we very much appreciate all the great work that they do, not just in the area of polio eradication, but in many, many other ways. And so, we very much appreciate, again, Rotary Club's involvement in this. So, let me just read the proclamation. And I'm going to have our representatives from the Rotary Club come forward and just expand a little bit on this effort and all the great things that the Rotary Club is doing. And so, whereas the Rotary Club of Arlington Heights is a member of Rotary International, the world's first and still one of the largest nonprofit organizations founded in Chicago in 1905. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize all the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, only two countries remain endemic. Polio mainly affects children under the age of five. There is no cure, but polio is preventable with a vaccine. Whereas members of the Rotary Club of Arlington Heights continue to contribute their time and their resources to support Polio Plus and the Global Polio Eradication Initiative. And whereas their efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health works and parents. Now, therefore, I, Thomas W. Hayes, mayor of the Village of Arlington Heights, along with the Arlington Heights Village Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024 as the World Polio Day in Arlington Heights, and do hereby encourage all residents to join the Rotarians of our local club in the fight for a polio-free world. So, I know we've got Dave and Jim here this evening, so if you guys would come forward to the podium, and we very much appreciate, again, your, all the work that you're doing.
Well, first, I want to thank you, Mayor Hayes and the board, for taking the time to recognize the Rotary Club of Arlington Heights and the work that we do. As you mentioned, it's kind of hard to believe that polio is still with us. And that's really the main goal of this annual fundraising event, is to bring awareness to the battle against polio. And I'm sure, you know, most people heard in the news that there was an effort in the past few weeks in Gaza where there was a case of polio, a young child contracted polio, and there were multiple pauses that took place in the fighting to allow the World Health Organization to come in and do mass vaccines. I think they vaccinated something like 300,000 children during that, during that pause. So, we appreciate you bringing that awareness. Another thing that most people don't understand, Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation still does matching of funds based on what Rotary is able to contribute. So, they do a two-for-one match. So, it's a great opportunity right now to go to the Rotary International site, and you can make, anyone can make a donation online, and it will, it will receive that two-for-one match. So, we really, we do appreciate you bringing it to the surface and the awareness that it, that it brings.
Great. Jim, anything to add?
Dave highlighted a lot of those things. I think the Rotary has been involved since the beginning of the eradication of polio, started in the Philippines. And I've been just really impressed with the way the Rotary has been a part of a lot of different world organizations to, not just remove the pandemic of polio, but they've also looked into other vaccines, been able to bundle those together. So, there's some other really cool stuff coming down the pikes with the money that's being contributed. So, a really great effort worldwide, and it starts here in, in Chicago with the Rotary organization.
Great.
So, glad to be part of that.
Well, I'm going to have you come up, and we're going to present this proclamation to you and then take a picture. So, if we could have trustee Bertucci and, and manager Recklaus come forward.
Mayor Hayes, just one last thing. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a date that's coming up on the calendar.
I was going to remind you about that, so please.
December, December 7th is the annual Rotary Santa Run, so hopefully everybody comes out and runs as a Santa. So, thank you.
Diane, you want to say?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to count to three. One, two, and three. Maybe one more. I think rabbit and pig went over there. Thank you.
Diane, one more?
Yes.
Sure?
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Can we do one more? One, two, and three. There you go.
Congratulations. Thank you for all the great work.
Right, there are no other recognitions or communications this evening, so we'll move on to citizens to be heard. And we have no blue cards from individuals for citizens to be heard.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any members of the board who wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Trustee Labads?
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. I'd like to remove items D and E.
Okay, those shall be removed. Anyone else on the board wish to remove an item? Any members of the audience wish to request that an item, any other item on the consent agenda be removed? Seeing none, I'll come back to the board then. Are any members of the board wish to vote no or pass on any remaining items on the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the remaining items.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by trustee Tanalia, second by trustee Labads. Any further comments from the audience on that motion? Seeing none, roll call on the remaining items.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Dunington?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Let's go ahead and get those removed items out of the way so I don't forget about them. Mr. Recklaus?
Thank you, Mayor. Both of them relate to the planned road and water main replacement project on Euclid. This is a significant project. It'll be a two-year project where we're going to be replacing just right around two miles worth of water main on Euclid between Northwest Highway and Waterman, I believe is kind of the, roughly the bounds of that. The water main replacement program, as you all know, has been a big priority of the village for the last handful of years. Our water mains are aging, and we want to eliminate and prevent water main breaks in that vicinity and make sure we're replacing things, you know, before our water mains hit the end of their useful service life and begin to break down. What makes this project significant is that it's along Euclid. And Euclid, as we know, is very heavily traveled. The, the plan is to do water main work in 2025 and have the road work completed in 2026. We are planning on putting out a pretty significant amount of information to the public on this on both an individual, project-specific, and general population basis. Obviously, there'll be information that'll be conveyed to individual residents as, as the water work impacts them or impacts their driveways, to specific areas in a general sense in terms of the schedules of the comings and goings of our construction crews. And then, lastly, to the general public as it relates to transportation impacts or roadway impacts and enclosures. We are going to create a project-specific website on this and then also an email group so we can communicate with the, the public as things go on. We, we can't share that much detail yet in terms of scheduling, because as you know, Euclid is governed partially by Cook County Department of Transportation and IDOT. And obviously, we have to work with them, and that will dictate much of the schedule, the specific schedule. But I don't know if I left anything off, Rob, or?
No.
Okay. I don't know if that addressed any of your questions.
Yes. Yes, thank you very much, Randy. I pulled it off because I just wanted to, this to get into the public information so it wasn't just on the consent agenda, because it is such a significant project, and it will significantly impact a lot of people, residents and commuters and people just going back and forth along Euclid. This, pretty much all of Euclid in here is residential, so that really has an impact. And one of the things is, and I'm glad to know, and I'm not surprised, that you'll be doing, you know, an extensive website and campaign and so on and so forth. And also, just to make sure that the residents along there know where they can park. I just remember when my street, Fremont, had its water main replaced really over 25 years ago, but nothing was usable for a period of time. And we're sort of a, you know, we're not a major road like Euclid, so I, I, and I know that it will be an experience for people when this comes along. So, that was the reason I pulled it off.
Any other questions? Trustee Tanalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Randy, or Rob, is this going to be the opportune time for those residents, or are there any on that stretch that have the lead water services?
I believe there's around 100 or so, we, we anticipate. And there could be ones, we, there's always possibility of ones we don't know about, but based on the information we have, I think it's right around 100.
Yeah, being an older part of town, I would have guessed that to be true. So, so that, that will come into play right along there as well, right?
Yeah, that's why the project is so extensive, because we're kind of combining efforts between our water main program and our lead, lead line replacement program.
Yeah. Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Right, we do need individual motions to approve these resolutions, so who would like to take the first one?
I will.
All right, trustee Labads?
I move approval of what was consent agenda item D, resolution approving the 2025 water main replacement program engineering design, bid, and construction observation services.
Second.
Motion by trustee Labads, second by trustee Grassi. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Dunington?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We move on then to new business, and we do have three items to consider tonight. And first, I would call on trustee Tanalia.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. I'm going to recuse myself from this item number A, letter A, from new business, because my clients are here on the project, and so I will remain quiet, or I can leave the room, whatever you prefer.
Not, not necessary for you to leave the room.
Okay.
All right, item A then is the request from Arlington 425 to, for an extension. And so, petitioner is present. Why don't you come forward?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Masuda. I'm in house counsel for CTH LLC, which is the owner of the property and the developer for Arlington 425. With me this evening is our manager and president.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Adriani. Thank you.
Before I discuss this matter with you, I just wanted to add something to the proclamation that was just given, which is phenomenal. It's really wonderful, because there are many different ways for people to contribute. And one of the things that my client, we, being in-house, have tried to do over the past many years, actually, is to allow various civic organizations use gratis of the property for various purposes. And I just met Dave out in the hall for the first time this evening, and he'll communicate with Ron Gerlach the fact that we've agreed once again, because the site is available, for the Santa Run to occur on our site at the northeast corner on December 7th. So, this is just another way that you can get to know us a little bit better and understand that we're trying to contribute to the community as much as anyone. With that said, you do have your packets, and we do rely upon all of you to have reviewed them. And I'm sure that there are many questions. All I can tell you is that we have worked with staff assiduously since we first applied for permits in March of this year. We were optimistic when we thought that we'd be able to obtain all three permits that we need, as well as final plat approval from you folks, in addition to getting several other agreements that we need in order to begin any kind of work on the site. Since that time, so many things have happened that have unfortunately caused, I hate to use the word delay, I don't like using the word glitch, but the reality is, things are not going to happen what we thought. And we need the time, and staff has suggested May 6th, because they too appear to agree that it could take that long to work through some of the final issues. And I will add this, we have drafts of the agreements into the village, including the draft agreement for use of Highland Avenue and the other streets to stage our construction. This is downtown. There are so many things going on downtown, and this site is constricted by being downtown. It's complicated, and I'll give you one example. We all thought, great place for the gateway sign, which is supposed to be on the northwest corner and invite everybody to say, this is downtown. This is the beginning of downtown. We wanted it to be at the corner. All of our conceptual plans called for it to be at the corner. Unfortunately, there are so many utilities underground, there are so many other things going on underground, we finally found that we can't really put it there. And we've been going back and forth just on that one issue for at least a month, I would say. That's just one small item of many, many larger items that we are now working on. I will say this, though. I would say we're probably 85 to 90% there. I, I'm the one in charge in our office to look at all the correction reports that come from the building department, and they, they have many, many questions, many comments. I redact them, I put them forth to our team, and I, I love our team, and I think they're the most incredible group of people. You too, Jim. But there are many people. Power Construction is part of our team, and I've known them for many years. I, I don't know whether you folks have had the opportunity to work with them. These people know what they're doing. And if they are unable to help us get to where we all want to be as quickly as we want to be, that says that there's a lot of complexity going on. And that was just one small example. But we are also through with most of the permit comments, they're down to a miniscule number of comments, mostly things like, can't give you final approval without the MRD permit, can't give you final approval without plat, final plat approval, things like that. The only other thing that we have to work with the village staff on right now is, and I will call it something that may sound a bit trite, but it is something of a conundrum. And that is how our garage and the Vale Street garage, which is yours, will, sorry, I'm going to step back, will interact and function together, okay? Because how that is resolved will affect not only that one structure and the drawings and the construction of it, but it will affect the entire site development permit, which is separate. It will affect the final plat, which is separate, but they're all intertwined. So, these things have to come together, and they just have not come together quite yet. But we believe that we are at the point now, we're given the opportunity to work with staff through basics, that we will get there. And we want this for the community. We want this to happen, and we all hope that you do too, and will allow us this opportunity. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Adriani?
No, I think Steve said it quite succinctly.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate the use of the vacant land for the Santa Run, especially myself as a runner every year. It's nice to, but I'd much rather see a shovel in the ground and a, a new building going up there. And so, very much appreciate your.
Pleasure.
Allowing us to, to use it for that purpose, but I think it's got a higher and better purpose that I'd like to see happen there. So, with that, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, good evening, everybody. The actual request this evening is to seek a six-month extension to the timeframe to complete receiving and going through the permit process and to obtain the final plat of subdivision. So, the project was approved in April of 2021. That was the amendment to the 2019 plan, and that set forth a two-year time period to accomplish those tasks that I just referenced. And there have been two extensions to date. First one was in April of 2023, granted a one-year extension, and then in April of this year, granted a six-month extension to November 2nd of this year. When we were working with the development team back in late August, early September, we suggested they submit a written request for another extension. We didn't feel that the project and, and all the approvals would be completed in that time. So, they have four applications pending right now. The first is the plat of subdivision. That was submitted in February of this year, and it's currently in round five of the review process. There are three building permits that have been submitted. The first one is a site development permit, second one is the Highland Garage, and the third one is for the Campbell Street Building. And those were all submitted in early March or, or in April, and they're in the fourth round of review. There does need to be a license agreement to allow the developer to have access and do certain things to the village's garage. That was submitted to the developer in June. They provided responses a month later, which was essentially a complete rewrite. We've said, you know, we're, we're not going to work off that rewrite. We, we want to work off the original document that our attorneys prepared, but we are willing to discuss any areas of major concern with them, so that still needs to get worked and resolved. It is complex, as the developer's attorney mentioned, with the proximity to the Vale Garage, the village hired structural and review firms, Walker Parking, and a normal construction, structural review, and they've been reviewing the project. We've suggested ways to make some adjustments to the plan, to negate some of the potential impacts on the garage and perhaps save some costs on the developer's part. So, those are all being reviewed and, and kind of discussed between the village staff and the developer team. So, based on that, staff recommended and the plan commission concurred and made a motion to recommend to the board to extend the deadline from November 3rd of this year to May 6th of 2025. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions anybody may have.
All right, thanks, Mr. Perkins. Well, we, we have had a number of requests for extensions, and we've granted all of those to this point. This is another request for an extension, but I think this situation is different than what's come before us in the past, because you have demonstrated good faith in moving this progress, this project forward, and there has been substantial progress that's been achieved in the last number of months. And so, we very much appreciate that effort to continue. So, I'm inclined to grant the request with the promise that we're going to continue to see demonstrated progress in the, in the weeks and months ahead, to get a shovel in the ground as soon as possible. So, those are my comments. Trustee Labads?
Thank you very much. I said six months ago, and I'll say it again, that I really wish we weren't here talking about this, as I'm sure you are. I know we were made aware that there may be a request for an extension at the time. I didn't realize how extensive the complexities were at that point, and so I guess I would have liked to have known more about that. Will it happen? I mean, you know, come May 6th, this will be a different board, because that's the day people who get elected in, in April will get sworn in. So, you know, we have no idea who that will be. I'll be here. So, but, you know, that's a concern, you know, because if you have different people who are not as familiar with what's going on and may have different points of view, that, that, that's a concern to me. So, I really would hope that you are able to get to that, you know, point that we won't need another extension. I think there'll be a, a party in your lot at that point. So, I'd like to be, you know, I guess, manager Recklaus kept apprised of the steps as it goes along. I guess another concern and not, is the financing piece. So, will that, even if you get all this, get all this, the permits and everything accomplished, I'm hoping that you'll still be able, you know, the financing will, will follow.
Is that a question? Because we are now working with JAL Capital Markets.
Okay.
In tandem, parallel with our construction development permits, everything, to, to put together the appropriate information for them to go out and find us that money. Yes?
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So, even though, you know, I'd
in tandem, parallel with our construction development permits, everything, to put together the appropriate information for them to go out and find us that money. Yes?
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So even though, you know, I'd rather not be in this position, you know, if we voted it down, it would mean everything starts all over again. And that would be a lot of time wasted.
And money.
And money, and money. Yep, and money. All right, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, trustee Shirley.
What's the realistic start for construction under the current, under what's going on right now as far as where your permits are and everything else? I mean, what realistically can we expect for start of construction if we get, grant the extension?
Our expectation back when we've got the current extension was to start construction within six months after that because we need to get the permits and everything else and M W R D. And right now, that could be a little bit contracted because we hope that we can get M W R D in line by the end of this year. We hope we can get COM Ed. Just to give you an example, they only, as of now, have put our project into their capacity planning group. That's what they call it, to figure out what we need on site to bring in from downtown and where it's gonna come from. So hopefully
Pardon? After how long?
Six months. A year, we've been working with them, talking to them. They even lost some money we sent them for, as a deposit for some of the work they were supposed to do a year and a half ago. Anyway, I, I, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. But yes, the answer is, if we can start within six months after the end of this process, whether it's May 6th, because we have to get to that point, or sooner than that, plus six months, that would be our goal to get into the ground.
So once permits are approved, six months after that?
That would be our goal, yes.
And, and between us, what are we thinking is the timeline for permits being approved? Maybe that's a question for Charles and Randy as well. I don't know. I mean, we're on fourth round. I'm hearing of review comments, and I realize I'm a little familiar with the process where it goes back and forth, and people don't always revise things in a timely fashion and vice versa. Maybe we don't always review things in a timely fashion. I'm just trying to figure out what is realistic to getting this permit approved so that we can then, in our minds, add on the six months and say, we'll see shovels in the ground by whatever. The first of what month, what year?
I mean, I, I think we're, we're looking for the six-month extension because we believe, or our staff is supporting the six-month extension because we believe it can be done within the next six months. I don't know if you characterize it differently.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We're hopeful that within that six-month time period, everything would be lined up. The license agreement, the building permits, the final plat, posting their letters of credit and bond for the public improvements, receiving, you know, the COM Ed and M W R D approvals to be able to sign, sign that final plat. And then they would have to pay for the permits as well to receive the permits. So they would have to, that would be million and a half, $2 million potentially for permit fees. So all of that would have to occur for them to meet this timeframe. So, you know, I don't know how quickly that can be done, but we're suggesting another six-month extension.
And so these extensions are being granted. When do they have to stop asking for extensions, once the permits are issued?
Correct.
Okay.
Then they would have met that time obligation.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Bertruchet.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my first question will be along the lines for staff, Randy or Charles. So talked, since the April of this year extension till now, so it's six months or just over six months, who would you say is more responsible for the delays? Is it, is it staffing issues to do their part? And I'm not trying to throw anybody the bus. I'm just trying to get an understanding. Or is it more on the developer's side?
I mean, it's, it's both sides. It's complex. You know, we have a big stack of plans electronically for each permit. And that takes time for staff to review. There's a set of comments that are provided back that are detailed. Some of the prior comments from the earlier round of review, the developer's team have addressed. Some, they come back with a different solution or answer that sometimes is not agreed upon, sometimes it is. And then there's a lot of back and forth. So we've tried to, you know, more recently, kind of shortcut that by having, you know, some meetings. So there was a meeting in September to try to talk through these items to kind of stop that back and forth and to get to the kind of endpoint. There is still the issue with, you know, the proximity of the proposed Highland Garage to the Vale Garage and the costs and concerns that the developer has about building that. So we've made some suggestions about slightly shifting that to the west and whether that would, you know, eliminate and reduce some of those costs and challenges. So that's being evaluated. So that impacts all of their plans as well if that change were to occur.
If I can, if I can add to it. I mean, I think every project is a little bit different. But, you know, the Bradford Allen project, which is similar number of units, similar size square footage, but different in terms of its location, different in terms of its complexity, as, as was noted. Downtown projects are always complicated. That project went very quickly. And, you know, we were able to, to get through that and get that approved and break ground very quickly. This one has had other challenges, and there are some unique characteristics to this site. You know, there's issues with utilities. There's issues, as Charles alluded to, with the parking garage and getting a license agreement that aren't elements that are required. And so I, I, I think it's hard to say who's responsible, but I think that, you know, we, we, I think we all would agree that this site is unique, and there are some challenges here.
So would you say that in some sense, and, and again, you know, every, everybody's busy and that you, sometimes you have realized that you gotta go back and forth more than you thought you would or whatever. But do, do we, are you saying that we may possibly share some of that responsibility for not being able to hit this six months?
There's always, I mean, there's always things, hindsight being 2020, you can look back on and say, you know, we could have done things differently. I mean, we did have a transition in building director during that same time period. And so, you know, we're, we're not here to point a finger. We're here to look forward and try to move this thing forward. We know, but, but, you know, the flip side is, we've made other projects go fast. And, and so this isn't from lack of trying. It's just, you know, trying to, to synergize with the, with the applicant and make sure that we're all swimming in the same direction here.
Yeah, no, and, and I agree about moving forward. What I'm trying to do is understand because we got, and, and I'm sure other board members also, we got our fair share of emails from residents and others basically saying, pull the plug on them. They're, they're, you know, if they're not gonna do this, and then they're gonna keep, you know, delaying and, you know, back and forth, you know, pull the plug on them and, and, and make them either go through the process again or, or move on. And, and there, there are residents calling for, are, are we doing this or not? And, you know, so we have to ask the questions. I mean, that's, you know, that's why we're doing it. And before, you know, I, I don't wanna look like I'm coming down on you guys, especially if, and it sounds like there were some delays on both sides over this last six months. But I, I gotta tell you, there, there are residents surrounding, there are people that come downtown and look to that property and say, what is with? They're not saying what is with you guys. They're saying what is with the village staff and the village board that they're allowing this property to just sit like this? You know, what is going on? What's, you know? So I think we're, I think we all wanna be sure that if we're doing another six months, I mean, nothing's a hundred percent, but we, you know, we wanna make sure that we're, you know, as much as possible expecting now to see shovels in the ground within six months. So that was my comment and questions, Mayor.
Okay, trustee Shringback.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, Bruce, thank you. I, I, I know it's a lot of work for you. I, I went back and looked at the, the video of our, of our April meeting that we had. I, I watched the entire presentation again. I wanted to see what went on at that meeting. And I know you guys were very optimistic when we gave you six months. And without pinning it to an exact date, July came up in conversation. This, this would, the six months you needed was ample amount of time, and you really expected to have it done by July. And, and I appreciate all the hard work and the things that go into developing a piece of property like this. I, I had asked staff to kind of give me just a list of, of every time this project has gone to any one of our boards and commissions. I, I really needed an update because I think besides trustee Tenaya, who recuses himself when we talk about this, we have four of us only on the board right now that were around when this project started back in 2018. And I know you had, Bruce, you had meetings with the, the neighbors even prior to that, where you, you met out in the, in the lawn there and presented the project and made them aware of what was going on. So this
That was 2018.
Pardon?
It was 2018.
Yeah, the project has been going on a long time. I mean, between planning, design, housing, committee of the whole, the village board, and the annual summary, everybody's met with you anywhere from three times to eight times. So it's, it's been a lot of meetings with not only this board, but planning and design and, and everybody else. And not knowing the exact dates, I, I think you've owned this property since the 90s. And
Can't remember.
And, and I know you started tearing things down back a little bit before 2000. So I appreciate everything that goes into, to getting this off the ground. And I, and I really hope that it will. I mean, I have, I have the same reservations that, that my colleagues have. I, I'm, I'm looking at, at now you want another six months. Are, I know the question's been asked a little bit, but six months from now, are you gonna come and want another six months? Are we really gonna get this thing off the ground over the next six months? Or are you gonna be asking for another extension?
We hope not. If you want a guarantee, I wish I could give you a guarantee. All I know is that of the six months that are about to expire otherwise, I would say three to four have been caught up in situations that neither staff nor we have been able to resolve internally. And so we've actually only had maybe a couple of months of really hard work, maybe three out of the, out of the six. But we know where we are now. We have moved ahead with just about everything possible to finalize it. But there just are some final things that have to be put together. And then we should be able to, in, in the, the confidence level that I have, I'm 74. And this may be my own swan song project with Bruce. I can't say. But I want it to happen. Bruce would not have spent the hundreds of thousands of dollars to date since just a year ago to move this along if he didn't think we were going to come to fruition. And I can assure you that between now and just the groundbreaking with a shovel, I'd be happy to bring one over tomorrow and just break some ground to show you that it'll cost another good chunk of money to get this going. I don't think that Bruce would spend that if he didn't believe this is gonna happen. And that's why we want it to happen, and we do believe that that is a, a fair date. We actually discussed the date with staff, and they were the ones who suggested that would work, that should work. And we're all confident that that is a date that we should be able to put a, a beautiful boat on everything, wrap it up, and bring you the final plat, get the permits issued, you name it.
Well, and I would too. I mean, it's a, it's a wonderful piece of property. It's right in our downtown. The plans that we approved way back when look nice. It, it, it is a beautiful-looking building. I, I mean, I'm kind of hearing that working on this project with some of the consultants that we've had, that we have, outside of all the time by a lot of volunteers, it sounds like we've actually had some hard costs that we've incurred. Do we have any idea what that cost is?
Yeah, it, it's, in terms of what we've actually paid the village to our various consultants and, and/or incurred to date, about $30,000.
Thirty thousand?
That's our out-of-pocket cost, not including staff time.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'd like to see this project move forward. And, and, and I, I know going back to the April meeting, I, I wasn't, I was really struggling with saying no to that last extension. And I, I know we had some other folks on the board that were feeling the same way. I, I would feel a lot better giving you folks another six months if we could somehow, in this recommendation, tie in the expenditures that, the solid expenditures, not the time, but the expenditures that we've had as a village. You know, if that's something that
No problem. And I, I was in
Mr. Mazur, talk in the microphone if you would.
Sorry. I, I don't wanna, I gotta, sorry, I'm bothering my back. I was in touch with, I, I've, I'm not sure who it was, maybe Chris Papierniak, about, there's only one bill we're aware of. My understanding was the process would be, it would be posted to our account, and then we would be sent a bill. So if you send us the bills, we'll get them paid. It's simple. If you want us to tie those things together, not an issue. We know we have to pay for certain things. Do. And, and that's it, period.
Randy, how could we, how could we make that work and maybe be something that we could tie in with this approval?
I, I think if the motion were conditioned and, you know, the payment of the village for the $30,000 of, of reimbursable expenses on our part, if you have any ideas on
I would just say maybe, I, I agree with that manager, and trustee Shringback. If it's the will of the board, it could be a motion to approve the extension conditioned on reimbursement of the village's, you know, approximately $30,000 costs within, if it's acceptable to the applicant, 30 days.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that 30 days is pretty typical.
It is.
I mean, I, I would at least feel good about that, extending that to six months if we can at least cover those expenses. I mean, I'd be happy to put a motion on the floor.
So as soon as we get the bills, we'll send those out, Steve and myself?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, if we could just have a clarification in terms of where the $30,000 is coming from. It's not staff time.
No, the, the village has had to engage with various consultants as part of the out-of-pocket expenses to, to review this. And so, again, not staff time. Ultimately, this project, there'll be permit fees in excess of $2 million, we estimate. But the, and part of that is expenses that we've already outlaid, things that we've already either incurred or paid for to our consultants in the pursuit of this. And, you know, typically, that gets reimbursed in, you know, theoretically, by this getting extended, the date that we're gonna be paid back is extended as well. And so this would be a gesture on their part to pay that.
It's more than a gesture. The reality is that one of the main consulting bills comes, or will come, or has come, from Walker Consultants. They were solicited, we did not even know they had been solicited to do the work, but now they are the prime mover in, in the garage issue, okay? So we're willing to entertain even that bill, even though we have to do a lot of work as a consequence of their findings that will change the garage, change our plat, change our permits, and change so much. So we want it to happen. That's important.
And that's an extra bill, Randy, on top of the $30,000?
No, that was including, that's included in the $30,000.
So if everything moves forward and they submit everything and it's all fine and permits are issued and throw an arbitrary number out there of $2 million in, in permit fees, that $30,000 could then, would that, would that come off of that?
Their $2 million and change would be reduced by whatever they would pay now. We will likely incur additional expenses in the next six months as well. Those would be reimbursed as, you know, normal when the normal permit, permits would be paid. We're, we're, we're saying, you know, if, if it's the will of the board, that the $30,000 we've incurred to date would be reimbursed within 30 days.
Yeah, 'cause I guess worst-case scenario, the project either doesn't end up happening or is delayed even longer.
Right.
At least here, we get those hard expenses
Correct.
that we've incurred, paid for.
If we wouldn't take issue with any of the bills, would we? They're all there?
No, I wouldn't imagine so. These are all things that had been, you know, we can document.
Before you make a motion, I just, I don't want to just say 30,000 if it's like 29.5 or something like that. So is there some better language we can use to include in a motion?
We could say up to 30,000, you know, upon, you know, production, you know, we could, we can say, bills incurred to date not to exceed $30,000 and payable within 30 days of being, you know, we could say of being-
Receipt of an invoice.
Receipt of an invoice. That way, if it takes us a couple of days to get an invoice together.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Trustee Grassi first?
Oh, well, thank you. I'm actually really appreciating this conversation because I know it's been a long time, this whole process. As trustee Bertucci said, we have been receiving emails from residents saying, "We don't want this. This is too long. This is empty. It should be better than this." But especially because we are responsible to use our taxpayer dollars wisely and responsibly, I think it's important to make sure that we are looking at this. So I do appreciate this other option of including that in the motion. I did have another question for our staff, though. Is there any way to also include, is it appropriate to include monthly updates on progress? So, or does that just happen normally?
I'm hearing that the will of the board is to receive more frequent updates from staff, and that's monthly. That's fine. We can certainly provide more frequent, monthly or otherwise, updates to the board on this effort beyond what we've done in the past.
I have to say, I'm especially concerned that there is not even a final decision with the garage placement yet, where that still is having to be determined, which to me seems that six months might not be enough time. I'm hoping I'm wrong, but that's my concern, as I'm hearing the plans, that we don't even have a plan for how that's going to happen yet.
On our part, do you want to comment on that?
I mean, the original plan is that the Highland Garage would be almost immediately adjacent to the Vale Garage. And in review of that, the village hired Walker Parking and another structural company. They reviewed it, provided feedback that was going to add costs to build a new Highland Garage. There was a concern for the developer, so as options to address that, there were suggestions that the garage could shift. So there are different ways of building it. Our main concern is to make sure that the Vale Garage is not compromised, you know, with the new construction during construction. So we have, there will be, Walker Parking will be doing, you know, testing, and they'll have vibration monitors on the garage and doing that before and during construction to make sure nothing happens to that garage because it's being built in close proximity. There are ways to kind of mitigate that by shifting the garage a little bit further so you don't have to underpin the footing and foundation. So that's what's being explored right now.
Okay. And then, a final question I have, and I don't know who this would be for, is regarding the MWRD and ComEd. Is this something that is just very specific to the spot? Is it because this has been such a long time coming? Why are these delays from these two groups happening? Is this-
I'm not sure what to say about ComEd, but this appears from my experience and what I'm being informed is par for the course. MWRD, we were not able to submit sooner than we did because final engineering had not been approved. And that was during this six-month period, but it was applied for. They have actually provided their first round of comments, and our engineer is working on a response to them as we speak. So it could be the end of the year, but it's not going to happen in a month.
Okay.
I think that's beyond all of our control.
And it sounds like it. I was just wondering if this is just because everything was delayed for so many years that it's, this is now just one other delay. I have to say, I would love to see this happen. I just want to say that. But I believe I made the motion last April to extend it, and I was really sad to see there was another extension required or requested. And since I have you here, the one thing that I do hear from people that I wanted to mention, that really ugly little parking lot that's sitting across the street, is that your property too?
It's owned by CCH, yes. But it's not part of this development.
Okay, so that will just stay as unused and ugly as it is right there, yes?
Well-
I'm sorry, but I have a lot of people comment on that little parking lot.
Well, it's interesting because during the COVID situation, we have a couple of tenants across the street at the retail component of the Campbell Court Building. And we allowed them, again, free use of that lot to stay open and stay in business. So it served many purposes. It's been used in the past for other things. Does it look great? No. It's-
And it's been courted off for quite some time. Yes, okay.
It is what it is. We hope, honestly, that if we're able to get this thing going, that that would be the next step. So maybe in a year, we'll be back, but hopefully not for a multi-year tour de force to get something going over there. We'd love to. So if people want to know what's going on over there, we can only do one thing at a time. And this is taking up all of our time. I trust me.
And actually, that lot will be used for the staging of this development also.
Yeah.
That's one fortunate thing.
Thank you.
I think the consensus is for more frequent staff progress reports on this. I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, but the direction is clear, I think, on that.
I'm hearing that loud and clear.
Okay, okay. Trustee Shirley.
Trustee Dunnington, should they go first?
No, go ahead.
I'm double dipping. So Randy and Charles, these specialty consultant assistants, we're using Walker and this other consultant to help us with reviews relating to the parking garage, which is, which is unique to this project compared to other projects. So we don't, I'm just guessing, we don't have the staff in-house to do some of these more complicated reviews. Are those reviews normally part of the permit fees that we get reimbursement for outside review assistance from the permittee once they get their permit for this contract with Walker? Or is this, is this going to be new?
Walker is a little different. The other consultant we use on a regular basis for all kind of mid or high rise, they do the structural review. So the other firm did the structural review for the Gateway Project, for example. When they paid for their permit, they paid for those fees as well.
Okay. So really, all we're asking is that these folks pay upfront for these fees that they would otherwise pay for once the permit was issued. And then we will credit their permit fees this amount.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so then just secondly is just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're just tossing around numbers. And if we're going to say that they're going to pay the whole Walker and other structural consultant bill, I mean, are they done? Are those consultants done? Okay, so I guess, I don't know. I guess we can go along with like the 30,000, but wouldn't be a cleaner way to just say that they have to pay, I mean, do we have a not-to-exceed contract for these reviews? Or is it just as we go, they bill hourly?
They bill as we go, because we don't, we don't know. There could be other issues that come up.
Okay, yeah, I get it. Okay. Okay, so maybe it is the best way to just arrive at a dollar figure based on what, expenditures to this point? Is that kind of where we are with it?
That's what we're saying, yeah. And I have a draft motion prepared, if you'd like me to read it for more consideration when the time comes.
At the appropriate time. So let's get some more-
That's all I have.
Okay, trustee Dannington?
Thank you. I support the idea to collect some fees at this time. I think it's a really good suggestion, and I appreciate your willingness to do that. My question was just, I was taking a look at the Norwood Builders website, and it says that there's two current developments, and it says 425, this project, and it says 105 South Main Street in Mount Prospect. And so my question is, just how much time are you putting into this project?
100%. 105 South Main is the extra 10 on top of that. We are, we are not moving ahead with that until we get this completed. And it's a 10,000 square foot site. It's a very small site, but it has as many complexities in its own right. It's a different type of development. It's not multiple use. It's no garage, no nothing like that. But right now, all of our efforts are toward this development.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Trustee Baldino?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for coming before us tonight. And I want to start out by saying I appreciate how complex the project is. I really do.
Thank you.
And I appreciate how much time and money, both on the petitioner's behalf and on staff's behalf, has been put forth in this project. Back in April, I asked some very direct questions, and it was my way of indicating how strongly I wanted this to move forward. And I think it's, it's important for us to remind ourselves that this hasn't been going on for six months. It's been going on for quite a while, which was the impetus for my comments back in April, wanting to push this forward, because I think we all want to see you succeed, not just move forward, but move forward successfully. I have to say that coming into the meeting tonight, I was not favorably inclined to vote yes for another extension. I think if we do pass the motion that basically says you're going to pay the fees that we, you know, things that we messed up, that helps. But I'm still not sure which way I'm going to vote. This has been going on for a while, and I don't, I don't want to imply that this is all on you because we talked tonight. And the other thing is that, you know, the memo that we got demonstrates the progress that's made, and that was important for me. So I'm not sure yet which way I'm going to vote, but I want to make it clear that just like trustee Labadz was talking about, in May, if you come back before the board, it's 50-50, and you pick them if you get another extension. So I'm really hoping that this moves forward. I hope we overcome the unforeseen obstacles that cropped up, and I hope this moves forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Just one final comment before we get the suggested motion is, I understand trustee Baldino's and others' concerns about this, but I really think we owe it to the community to try to get this property developed. And if we don't grant this extension, we've been put in a tough place. Because if we don't grant this extension and they have to walk away, it's going to be another five, six years before anything is built there.
Right.
So I really think that, you know, we're in a difficult place, but, you know, we've got to go with what is before us. And I feel comfortable that there's been enough progress demonstrated that we are going to get a shovel in the ground sometime next year. And so I'm, again, going to vote in favor of the extension. But Mr. Reklau, do you have a suggested motion?
Sure. Yeah, bear with me here. I just wrote this as we were talking, and Hart may give me eyes as we go to refine it. But motion to approve an extension to the PUD and preliminary plat of re-subdivision, extension deadline for Arlington 425 from November 3, 2024 to May 6, 2025, condition on the payment of the village's out-of-pocket costs incurred in the review of the project not to exceed $30,000 within 30 days of being invoiced.
Any concerns, Mr. Passman?
None whatsoever.
Okay, okay. All right. All right. Trustee Schringback?
I'm going to do my absolute best to recite that. I would move to approve an extension to the planned unit development and preliminary plat of re-subdivision with an expiration deadline from November 3, 2024 to May 6, 2025 for PC number 21-002, with the condition that village out-of-pocket expenses not to exceed $30,000 be paid once invoiced with a due date of net 30 days. Is that okay?
Motion by trustee Schringback, cited by trustee Bertucci. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience on this? Trustee Grassi?
I would just like to request regular updates on what's happening, please. I know we talked about that, but I just wanted to ask for that again.
You can always contact us, too. We'd be happy to respond in any way we can.
That would be, that would be so, then we could all be on the same page, too, and I think that's helpful, especially if there are more complexities that come up.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, move on then in the agenda to second item under new business. That's the proposed red flag ordinance under chapter 28 for the properties located at 106-110 West Eastman Avenue. Mr. Reklau?
Mr. Perkins is going to present this item.
Okay.
All right, thank you. In December last year, the board approved what's called a red flag ordinance. What is before you tonight is an ordinance, proposed ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map and certain portions of the 2007 downtown master plan. So staff spent a lot of time since December last year working with the community and property owners, and I want to thank my staff for their efforts on that. The red flag was in response to the Eastman Development, where there were concerns about the type of density and height and the types of redevelopment that potentially could occur in and around the Northwest Highway corridor from Vale to Walnut Ridge area. And so the ordinance set forth a requirement to hold an initial public hearing within 90 days of that red flag ordinance, and then looking at things like the comprehensive plan, the downtown master plan, you know, zoning and other things. There are no proposed zoning code changes tonight. Now, the board could direct staff from the Plan Commission to hold hearings to make some zoning changes. That's not what we're proposing at this time. We're just proposing amendments to the comprehensive plan map and the 2007 downtown master plan. So the steps in the process have been to outreach to the property owners. We've had, started off with one-on-one meetings with the individual property owners that were affected. We had a neighborhood meeting in March. Then there was an initial public hearing in April. There were subsequent meetings with some of the affected property owners. And then the second public hearing with the recommendations at the end of August. So this was what was talked about in December last year. The areas highlighted in red have five specific properties or areas that were studied. And then there's a sixth one, which is basically the parking lot that trustee Grassi raised next to Arlington 425. So I'll go through each one. This is just the zoning map we can refer back to if we need to, and this is the existing comprehensive plan. So we did use the village's website and the portal there to get information out to the community. Those that were interested in it could sign up and receive e-blass on information and meetings that were coming up, and we posted things on there for both the April and the August meeting. So the downtown, just a quick recap, the downtown master plan was adopted in 2007. It was a result of a two-year effort by, I think, a 21-member task force. And it did set forth some development parameters for certain blocks in the downtown. It did not include the three parcels on the north side of downtown that I'm going to talk about this evening. It did set forth some other elements in the plan that still relate to these properties and had some suggestions on building heights and things like that that we took into account in coming up with the recommendations that we did. So the first property is the 234 West Northwest Highway property. That's the Village Bank property. We met with them in their offices. They just made some significant investments and improvement in the building, and they indicated they have no immediate plans to, you know, seek or try to redevelop their property. And they were happy with their location here. But we are looking at, you know, a long-term plan, that if it were to redevelop, what kind of standards would we like to see there? So in December, the recommendation was to study this property, and that was what was looked at. And we're recommending, and the Plan Commission concurred, making an amendment to the 2007 downtown master plan to insert three pages in the plan. So this is the downtown master plan, this book, so there'll be three pages added to that. For this property, there are 11 recommendations. I'll go through them quickly and then be happy to answer. I'll go through them quickly and then be happy to answer any questions. So the first one is dealing with setbacks from St. James Street. So setting forth a requirement for a 20-foot setback from St. James. In reality, that's what the zoning code would require today. The B-5 code says that any property that's across from single-family R3-zone property, 50% or more has to provide a 20-foot setback. In early 2023, the areas to the north were zoned moderate-density or lower, kind of lower-density residential. The neighborhood petitioned to rezone their portion of their neighborhood to R3, so that triggers that 20-foot requirement. So this merely reflects what the current code would require. Now, there's no code-required setback on Chestnut. So the suggestion is at least a 10-foot setback along Chestnut Avenue. And then we are recommending larger setbacks as you step down, step back from St. James. So a 35-foot setback for the fourth level. And then a 95-foot setback for the fifth level. And I have a cross-section that'll explain that. We looked at the Sigewatt 16 development, and I'll talk about that in a minute while we came up with that. Recommendation three is to encourage, you know, like a three-story row home or stacked coach units on the frontage of St. James with a rear autocourt or access. Or even you could have a parking garage attached to the back that would not be seen from the neighborhood to the north. So there are different ways of developing that. Recommendation four talks about a maximum building height of 100 feet. That is in our downtown master plan now, although the B-5 code would allow it to 140 feet. So we're reinforcing that 100-foot suggestion in these changes. Recommendation five would be to restrict access to only Chestnut and St. James Highland Street, rather than not to allow access onto St. James. Now, there exists a current access from the bank onto St. James. That would not be impacted by this proposal. You know, that's an existing condition. But any redevelopment, we would look to preclude access onto St. James, the residential street. Number six is more traditional architecture. We heard from the neighborhood with the Eastman Development. They came up with a very nice contemporary design. But, you know, everybody said that's not the right fit for downtown at this location. So reinforcing that, so we don't go through that again. But we want to see traditional-type architecture for any development on this site. Number seven, encouraging focal points at the intersection of Northwest Highway and Highland, and also Northwest Highway and Chestnut. Number eight, sidewalks along Highland and Northwest Highway would be to the downtown Arlington height standards. So they would be wider, typically 11 or 12 feet in width, a little more pedestrian-friendly. Number nine, that the site be cohesively developed, so it's not, you know, divided up or tried to be piecemeal development. Number 10 talks about ideal uses to activate the streetscape along Northwest Highway and Highland and Eastman, some commercial uses, maybe a restaurant. But then also some things that we would not want to see, like 24-hour uses, gas stations, funeral parlors, drive-throughs, things of that nature. And then last, dealing with parking, that, you know, all of the parking needs for the future redevelopment should be accommodated on the site. This is the cross-section that I referenced earlier. So on the left is the house on the north side of St. James, approximate. Typically, the older neighborhood has about a 20-foot setback to the public right-of-way. Then where the trees are, you've got the public right-of-way, and then the 20-foot setback. And this module here is almost identical to Sigewatt 16. So you've got a three-story row home with a four-story element in the back. This could be an access for garages. It could be a garage itself. It could be stacked units if it's designed differently. And then you have the 95-foot setback before you've got a taller building. So those would be the three pages that would be suggested to be added to the downtown master plan. The second site is the AT&amp;T property. It's almost 100% covered with building and parking. They've got major fiber optic in there. We did reach out to AT&amp;T, had no response. We have no indication that they have any plans to redevelop their site. It would be fairly expensive to do so, but that's not impossible. So we set forth some standards. These standards are pretty much taking from the Eastman Development as far as setbacks and stepping the building back and applying them to the AT&amp;T property. So even though it's not across from residential, it's across from the village parking lot, we're suggesting a 10-foot setback similar to the Eastman Development. And then the second floor being set back 20 feet, and the sixth floor being set back 50 feet. And then setting a lower height limit of 77 feet, which is recommendation three. Again, as a reminder, the downtown zoning code would allow up to 140 feet. Again, number four, dealing with the traditional architecture. Five, suggested focal points at St. James and Vale, and Eastman and Vale. The sidewalks on Vale and Eastman would need to be to the village's downtown standards, which they are today. So if they're replaced, they would need to comply with that. And then again, talking about the ideal type of development, active uses certainly on Vale and Eastman at the corner. And then, you know, residential or office up above. And then prohibiting or suggesting prohibiting 24-hour uses, gas stations, things of that nature. And then the Eastman Development, we did exactly the same thing. I know that project's been approved. They do have a two-year time limit. I've reached out to that developer. They've indicated they're probably now looking at, you know, maybe sometime in the third or fourth quarter of next year. They're trying to seek their financing as well. So if they didn't move forward with their projects, we wanted to make sure the downtown master plan reflected the design standards that we spent a lot of time with multiple public hearings. You're getting the, you know, going back and forth between the neighborhood and the developer. I won't repeat these. These are very similar to the AT&amp;T site. Then moving on, there are a series of properties up front on Park Place and Highland. So these are currently zoned R7, and they're designated high-density multifamily on the comprehensive plan map. But for the most part, they're one- or four-story units. With the exception of the building on the left, that building is an 11-story, 11-unit building, rather. The one in the middle, 307 Park, is one unit. The 309 is a single-family house. This development here, this building here, has two units. And the 315 Park Place, that is four units. So if they were to redevelop as R7, they could develop with more units than what's proposed. And I'll be happy to answer questions on that. Again, we're not proposing rezoning them at this point. So, but what we are recommending is changing the comprehensive plan. So at the top is the existing comprehensive plan, which shows the high-density residential, which is reflective of an R7-type development, which allows up to 60 feet in height. On the bottom is the dashed area, the properties that I just went through. And the recommendation is to change that to moderate-density residential, which is more an R6 development, which would allow buildings up to about 40 feet. The next property is an item, you know, that we're talking, item number four. It's the 40424 and 380 West Northwest Highway properties. These are right at the northeast corner of Northwest Highway and Walnut Ridge. They're auto-related uses. As many of you know, Northwest Highway used to be a big auto corridor with car dealers and things like that. And they've all moved to Dundee Road and other locations. These buildings, we did look at whether rezoning would be appropriate or not. These buildings are really set up with garage doors. They're set up for auto uses. If there was a rezoning, it would be very difficult to use the properties, you know, for, you know, the way that they've been built. So we have looked at the back half of the property, though, that fronts on the residential. And there was a lot of discussion about this at the Plan Commission. So the back half of these properties, half of it is currently designated high-density multifamily, this area here. And then the other half is designated commercial. And there's like a small, single-story component of the commercial building. And there's outdoor, you know, parking and storage in this area that's designated high-density multifamily. The recommendation is to change that designation to moderate-density multifamily for both of those parcels. The B3 uses, unless there was a desire to, you know, come back and change the zoning, the B3 uses could continue. But if and when a redevelopment plan was submitted, then everybody would look at the downtown, at the master plan or the comprehensive plan, rather, for guidance on what the appropriate redevelopment would be. The fifth property is a property that the village owns. It's part of Parking Lot S. And it has, even though it is designated, or sorry, rezoned public lands, it's still designated as kind of a duplex, single-family. So we're recommending changing that to the institutional classification here. And then last is the property we talked a little bit about earlier, the parking lot at the southwest corner of Campbell and Chestnut. There are two parcels here owned by Mr. Adriani. The one is the parking lot. It used to be a parking lot for Paddock Publications. The second is a single-family house. Currently, they, both properties are zoned R6. But the comprehensive plan, as you can see, designates it high-density multifamily, which again would be the R7-type zoning. So the proposal here is to change that designation to moderate-density multifamily, the more accurately reflects what the existing zoning is. So with that, I know that was a lot to go through. But the Plan Commission voted 5 to 0 in favor of a recommendation of approval of these changes. I've got each one listed here with the appropriate attachments. If there are any questions, we can go through them one by one in more detail. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Perkins. Anything further from the staff? Okay. Questions from the board? Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you. So Randy or Charles, I understand we're not changing zoning, but I do have a question. Refresh my memory, what does a developer need to do to put a project up that might not be, I don't want to use the word zone, but might not be the same as what we had in the master plan?
So it would depend. If it met the current underlying zoning, then they wouldn't need to do anything. If it didn't meet the zoning and they needed variations, or they wanted to change the zoning, then they would be seeking changes to the zoning and then an amendment to the comprehensive plan at that time.
So if something is currently zoned as commercial, but in the comprehensive plan, you know, it's gotten changed to this multi-use that we're looking for. So for example, that parking area on, excuse me, I think that would be Walnut and Fremont. Anyways, that behind the auto, the Amaco and all those other auto places, that little corner there that you're showing, I'm sorry, yeah, we're, yeah. If that's zoned right now as commercial, is that what you're saying?
So let me go back to the overall zoning map. So currently, the area, yes, the area is zoned B3. So the frontage and the rear of the property is all B3.
Okay. So even though the comprehensive plan might say something different, if somebody wants to do something that's still within B3, a B3, they don't have to do anything?
If they, correct. If they had a code-compliant B3 plan and proposal, they wanted to retenant their building, you know, have another user in the building, the zoning hasn't changed, they could do that. If they wanted to do something different that required a variation or something, then, you know, then we would look to the comprehensive plan and what the comprehensive plan says. And right now, the back half of that property, part of it is commercial and part of it is high-density multifamily. And the suggestion is to change the back half from commercial and high-density multifamily to moderate-density multifamily.
Okay. So is the comprehensive plan just guidance? It holds no real, it doesn't, like you said, it doesn't change anything, but it doesn't require anything new or different of the...
Correct. The comprehensive plan is a guide. It's a tool that the village staff and the village board look to when looking to redevelop properties or somebody's coming in, you know, to, you know, propose changes. But it doesn't change the underlying zoning. So this is, this could be a first step or a last step on some of these properties. If the board wanted to go further and change zoning or do an overlay zoning on the three properties that are in the downtown to set some of those parameters, they could do that. But right now, it would just be changing the comprehensive plan map and the downtown master plan. And that is just a tool that's looked at as a guide. It does not change the underlying zoning.
Mr. Passman, just...
Yeah, I want to just echo what Director Perkins has said. And from a legal perspective, comprehensive plan is probably best thought of as a long-range aspirational tool. They typically reflect what a community sees for, what it would like going forward. Now, it's a snapshot in time of what a desire is. And so sometimes, as Director Perkins has outlined, something might be in a comprehensive plan as what a village board thought would be a good idea. And things happen, and a developer or a property owner comes and has a different idea. And maybe their idea should be viewed in light of that comprehensive plan. It may still be valid. Sometimes, it's an opportunity for a municipality to realize that some things don't always go as planned. And that might be a circumstance similar to the option Director Perkins described, where you might change a plan as part of an application for zoning relief because there's a realization that the plan was a good idea at the time, but here's where we are today. From a legal perspective, these kind of exercises are important because under Illinois zoning law, if there's ever a challenge to zoning denial, one of the factors that courts traditionally look at in Illinois is the care with which the village has engaged in comprehensive planning. So these kind of discussions, these kind of regular exercises are important. It's something we would point to, whether in this area or otherwise, to show that this is a community that does try to engage in planning and at least analyze whether or not its zoning should be revised to meet the plan or if there's good reasons not to. That's really where the rubber meets the road on all these issues.
If I could, if I could add, Mayor, I mean, I think one of the tools there, again, as Mr. Passman indicated, this is a statement of what the village wants to see happen. And so if this is not what the village board wants to see happen, we shouldn't make that change. Why that's important is developers will come to staff and say, well, what do you, you know, we're thinking of buying this property. What do you guys want to be there? And we don't really want to be in a position for staff to say, well, we would love to have an ice cream shop because we like ice cream. I mean, we want to be able to point to something hard and fast where the board took action to make a policy decision saying, this is what we would like here as a community. And so it is important. In a perfect, perfect world, zoning would be reflective of the comprehensive plan. But, you know, there's a more elaborate process. And, you know, we sometimes realize that that can take time, that, you know, we ultimately want this to be happening, this thing in the comprehensive plan. We're okay with what's there now. So there's nuance there. But, you know, generally speaking, you know, zoning should follow comprehensive planning at some point if we're doing this right, ultimately.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. I had a quick question, going back to the Park Place. First off, I want to thank you for all the work you've done with this. I know this came out of so many conversations with the residents and their neighborhood. And I really am still so grateful in how we were able to find some compromise for the building in the Hannah area. But I'm grateful that this conversation is happening because hopefully we can prevent other things from happening in ways that the community would not want down the road. But I wanted to speak to, yes, this. We received an email just talking about this one, a number of issues, just questioning some specifics. But are there any historical notes about any of these homes that was part of that initial study? I don't remember what that study was that was referenced a number of times. Is there anything worthy of, especially these two residential homes, just to be aware of, to maybe not look at keeping it a residential?
So, yeah, you're talking about the Art Institute study.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't remember. Yes, yes.
I didn't look at that, so I don't know specifically whether these two, these two homes in particular are included. But a lot of... Um, but a lot of the homes in, in this, you know, historic neighborhood are included on that list. Um, again, currently they're zoned R seven, which is the higher density multifamily. And they're designated, um, uh, you know, as high density multifamily. We're proposing to change the designation from high density to moderate density. So, you know, that would just, uh, in theory, limit when, if somebody were to petition to, you know, remove the home and rebuild it, you know, how many units they could put on the property, but it wouldn't necessarily preserve, you know, the home itself.
Would, would, would that be another conversation to, to change three oh seven, three oh nine to just keep that residential? Because it is single family or how, I know this is the bigger comprehensive plan, but I'm just looking at, at that as a question right now.
Go back to the zoning map again. So if the board were to approve, you know, these changes tonight, I mean, the next step could be for certain areas to do the public hearing and look at the rezoning. And we, the village has done that in the past. So on Pine Avenue east of Arlington Heights Road, there were changes made to the comprehensive plan and there were some down zoning of some of those areas. Um, so in this particular block area, you can see here, the properties are zoned R seven. If they were to change to the moderate density, then the ideal zoning would be R six, which would still allow for redevelopment of those properties, but not at the same level of density and number of units. So for example, the, if I can go back and I can walk through a little bit, um, what kind of changes that could be. Yep, here we go. So this, this building here, for example, uh, has eleven units. And under the R seven, they could tear it down and redevelop mathematically per echo with fifteen units. Under the R six, you could get five units. So if the area was rezoned, this building would become non-conforming. It could continue to remain, uh, but it would be non-conforming. And if, if they were to redevelop it or it was destroyed by fifty percent or more, then they would have to come in and comply with the R six standard. These two homes just have one lot, um, per, you know, per, one house per lot. Um, if it was R seven mathematically, uh, this three oh seven could get seven units as an R seven and two as an R six. And the three oh nine, uh, property, uh, top right as an R seven. Again, mathematically, doesn't mean they could do it with, you know, once you cite planning, but based on the land area, they could get nine units and under the R six, uh, they could get three. So those properties would not be non-conforming if there was an R six rezoning. The bottom right, that's a newer development that was approved probably ten, twelve years ago. That's a four unit building. Uh, under R seven, they could put fourteen units on that property. And under the R six, they could get three. So that would be non-conforming. And then the four oh two, four oh four Chestnut, um, they have, uh, two units there now. Under the R seven, potentially you could get eleven units and under the R six, you could get two. So that would not be impacted by a rezoning. So those would be the issues that would have to be talked about. If there was a direction to study a rezoning of this area and there'd have to be proper public notice and that all those discussions would have to take place with the property owners and, and the neighborhood. But we're, the first step would be that we're suggesting is to change the comprehensive plan map to just reduce from high density multifamily to moderate density multifamily.
You know, I know we've, we've received a number of emails in the past with the previous historic home issue. And, um, we have received, at least I, I'm assuming all of us have received some emails just with concerns about maybe fine tuning some of the, the issues going forward. So right now I am in support of this change of the comprehensive plan map. I personally, based on, um, emails and, and conversations I've had too, I would be open to looking at, especially being able to keep some of these single family homes, a single family, that, this is right across from Memorial Park, yes?
Correct, yes.
Yes. Um, but I don't know the will of the board, but that would be my, my, um, hope that that conversation could happen down the road.
Other comments. Trustee Dannington.
Thank you. Um, can, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Village Bank property, if you could pull that up. Thanks. Um, so I always think that high density is really important in that we should, that high density is the most environmentally friendly and is great for affordability. So, um, I, I think that this is a good plan to go as high as we can. Um, but we did hear from some residents in the Hannah neighborhood that are concerned about that. Um, my thoughts were that, um, with it being on Northwest Highway, that the residents would mainly use that, um, to get around and so that hopefully it wouldn't be a burden on the neighborhood. Um, but could you speak to a little bit about that and why you're suggesting a hundred feet? And just maybe like what the density and the impact on the Hannah neighborhood would be?
So, you know, we felt, uh, we, we looked at the two thousand seven downtown master plan and actually talked about changing the height limit from a hundred and forty feet to a hundred feet in certain areas. Uh, there was, at the time, there was a feeling that a hundred and forty feet was a little bit too tall. Um, so, um, you know, you've got the Arlington Town Square Development and Dunton Towers, those are around a hundred and forty feet. Um, there are other buildings that are a little bit over a hundred feet, um, but that would typically be about a nine story building. So the thought was that this is a big site. You could get, still get a significant number of units on here, which is part of the downtown master plan to have more density to support the businesses. But do it in a way that would soften the impact and, and step back from the neighborhood to the north. And that's why there were kind of eleven recommendations on this site, uh, dealing everything from the step backs to the height to the access points. Um, but that doesn't mean, you know, there would be no traffic, you know, going north. I mean, it's almost impossible to preclude, you know, some traffic going north as well. So all of that would have to be looked at in, in a development plan and anybody who would have a petition. Uh, for every development in the downtown, this is zone B five, is a P U D. So they would have to go through that same process that Eastman and Arlington four twenty-five did. And then have to provide those traffic studies and parking studies and, you know, every development would have to be vetted through that process. But this would just set forth, you know, some, some more specific standards for kind of ideas to try to soften the impact for, on the neighborhood to the north and the type of development that we want to see there.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from the board? Trustee Lebed.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank staff. I want to thank the residents and everybody at the Plan Commission, who had multiple meetings too, uh, who've been involved in this. I appreciate, uh, the, the seriousness that everyone's approached this since we requested having the, uh, the red flag ordinance and, and that was passed. Um, since we have this particular one up, I am concerned about the recommendation for with a hundred feet, especially since the, um, the Eastman building would be seventy-seven feet. And to me, it seems kind of weird to have that lower and then higher as we go to the west, when you would think things would sort of step down in terms of, um, uh, of height. Um, I appreciate the recommendation for the townhomes on the back of that. And that's another thing that seems to me, when you showed the cutaway of what it would look like, it seemed like you'd have these townhomes and then whoosh, you'd have this hundred foot building, even though there would be space in between. I, I, I appreciate the comment of the des- density, but this is, um, it's a pretty small, kind of weirdly shaped neighborhood, um, being, you know, in this triangle neighborhood that we, I, in full disclosure, I live here, as I think everybody in this room probably realizes. Um, so I will say that it's kind of a, a weird little triangle that we live in. Um, but that's the thing that probably concerns me the most is the recommendation for the hundred feet. Even though it's with bonuses and the setbacks and so on. Um, you know, it's interesting when I think back, because I was on the master plan, the downtown master plan task force years ago. Um, and I would say that is sort of in my, my infancy of any planning, um, you know, uh, involvement before my Plan Commission days and this. And, and so sometimes you, you know, things sound really good. And even as you mentioned, um, you know, things change and, uh, some of the things that we did, it's, it seems like, we did a lot of really good recommendations and so on. And I am glad to see these, these things being added. But I will say, you know, there may be some things I would have thought about differently had I known what I know now. But I think we can all say that about pretty much everything that we do. But that's one thing that I am concerned about, the, the, the maximum building height in recommendation four. Um, I appreciate Trustee Grassy, uh, bringing up the, the homes on Park Place. And, uh, you know, that, it would be, you know, certainly my preference to be able to retain the single family homes. I mean, they will be, nobody's moving, so, so they're, they're going to be there. Uh, interesting that going down, at least with the R six zoning recommendation, even the quad couldn't be a quad. So that's a little bit smaller density, so I appreciate that. And that apartment building used to be two stories and then they added a story. And that's why it looks, it has this thing and it looks kind of weird because, and it prompted a neighbor who lived to the, to the west of it to move. Because that neighbor didn't want to live next to the three story building. As for, you know, some of the historic things, you know, I, I am hoping that one of the neighbors here can speak to this. Um, but I think four oh two, um, North Chestnut has some significance in the past. And now how historic you want to, um, you know, it is, but, um, I have a vague recollection of hearing that it had something to do with back when, um, Lutheran Home was down in, in the general area. And, um, you know, so it, it has a, um, relationship to that. Um, but in general, I, I'm really pretty supportive of what's been accomplished. I think the neighbors, um, are pretty supportive, although, you know, not necessarily thrilled with everything. Um, but my biggest concern is that hundred foot maximum on the Village Bank site. And then one other thing, I guess I want to mention it and came up, um, and that's with a, um, on, uh, on West Fremont where the, the cars, you know, the auto mechanics are. And that there's a lot, sort of a storage lot there of vehicles. And I, the reason, is that something that's permissible in the B three to have? Because there seemed to be a comment, and I couldn't find it again, that some of the vehicles have been there a very long time. Whether they're there, stored there because they're used for parts by some of the mechanics. But I just, I bring that up because when Arlington Ford was, came to us, uh, because they, they now do commercial repairs. And we were clear that things were not to be stored on their property for a length of time. You know, it was supposed to be during the time they needed to use a fix. So, so I didn't know how this fits into that. And I don't know, Charles, if you have any information?
Uh, I mean, the property is zone B three, so it can be used for, you know, vehicle, you know, storage, certainly in association with the, the business itself.
Right.
Um, storage of off-site vehicles, you know, from some other operation, you know, they can't be stored there. Uh, it has to be, you know, a business, holds a business license. Um, the issue of inoperable vehicles, that, you know, becomes a bit of a challenge. Is it a vehicle that's waiting repair or is it, you know, inoperable? Um, you know, there are certain state requirements that, you know, sometimes a auto place has to hold a vehicle for a certain time if it's been in an accident. So there's, there's some complexities there. So we'd have to take a closer look at that and see what's happening. Uh, I, I can't speak for sure, but, um, because it's zone B three, they, they can use it in, in conjunction with, you know, an approved business, you know, in the building itself.
That, that I understand. Yeah, that I understand. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. That's it for me.
Trustee Tenalia.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I, I think what staff has done here is, is it's actually really, really good in a lot of ways. I was not sure how I was going to feel about this until I spent some time looking at it and thinking about it. And every good community, um, has this picture of what it sees itself as. And, and this is, I think, uh, Mr. Passman said, it's a snapshot in time. It's, it's what we might be thinking is a good idea today. And, and with everything that Charles has done and tried and had accomplished, uh, through the years here, this is just another step in that direction of having a roadmap of, of where we might, where someone might want to go. And, and personally, for, for what, what I do for a living, and I work in a community that has something like this, it makes it a lot easier to work for that developer or that client who owns that piece of property to say, well, instead of going to the village and say, well, what do you want to see there? Like Mr. Eckler said, well, we have this. This is a good starting point. Start here and maybe come up with something better even, whatever. But, so I think it's good. It's, it's good that you've put this together. And so I'm in support of this. The, the, the one thing that I do want to talk about is the parking lot. Because that is a big weed fest and there's no parking stalls. It's just cars piled in against and next to that don't ever move. Um, and I've had three or four phone calls from people in the neighborhood who, from their second story, can see down into that and have asked, is there anything that can be done about that parking lot? And I've seen it myself and it's been there since forever. I, I just don't know if, if there's a way that that can get, you know, cleaned up a little bit. It's just unfortunate that it is the way it is, especially as Trustee Lebed just said, we've kind of put some pretty heavy restrictions on a car dealership on the very north end of town, um, for this kind of thing. So, um, those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further from the board? Then I'll go to the audience, and we do have at least one blue card, Tom Gaynor. And members of the audience are reminded of our three minute time limit. I know Tom knows our time limit.
Mayor Hayes is always really good at coaching me on my time management. Thank you. Um, Tom Gaynor, two oh eight West Fremont. Um, and I do want to start out with some thanks. I have, uh, just reinforced a couple of suggestions and then, uh, kind of finish with, uh, uh, concern. So the, uh, the thanks is the fact that the board, uh, Charles and the plan, planning team, uh, this top-down approach towards a comprehensive look at this very special case that we have with the Hannah Triangle next to, uh, the Central Business District is something that I think has been really well done. And it's, uh, I think appropriate because it, the, the bottom up approach that we did for Eastman was a lot. And my goodness, if we had to repeat that every occasion, I think we'd all really be struggling. So this has been hugely efficient. Um, Michael and team did a, a terrific job of listening to the neighbors and capturing concerns and bottling what, all the concessions that we had with the Eastman project over the course of a year plus and, and put that into the plan. And I think that's really well received by the neighbors. Uh, my distribution list to, uh, the entire Hannah Triangle, uh, hasn't changed for the last couple of years. And, uh, we don't have a room full of people with pitchforks here tonight. So I think that should be an indication that, uh, I think we're doing a good job of, uh, working together and trying to figure out how to make the best of this very unique situation. And I think that's something that we all should be proud of. I think that's a, a pat on the head, uh, for all of us involved. Uh, Nicole and Robin have already stolen all of my, my thunder. Um, because I do think, uh, in the spirit of historic preservation, which is chapter six of the comprehensive plan, um, we should celebrate our historic properties. And we've got two of them looking at their most, uh, uh, you know, solemn park, uh, on Park Place there. And it just seems like somehow we should be able to find it, or find a way to say, those houses have been single family homes for over a century. Why don't we have a master plan that, that, you know, celebrates that? It just seems like that would be a really good, good move and tangible evidence that our historic preservation is something that this, this town holds is, is something near and dear. Uh, Robin brought up, and sorry for the informality, I grew up in corporate, I don't talk with titles. Um, but Robin brought up the, the hundred foot issue for Village Bank. That one has Um, but Robin brought up the the hundred-foot issue for Village Bank. That one has the most uh neighborhood uh concern. And just because of that and the density that could go along with it, uh, and it also, it doesn't pass the sniff test, like my term. Whereas as you leave town, the buildings are getting taller. That that you go from AT&T to Eastman at seventy-seven feet and then go up to a hundred. Somehow it doesn't look like we have our planning act together. I just doesn't feel right, so I would just toss that out there as a a what-if. Um, and I think all of you received a a slide pack from Sarah, neighbor Sarah. Uh, regarding density cuz that's actually probably the number-one neighborhood concern. Uh, as Robin noted, we have a very shaped, you know, oddly-shaped triangle. Uh, it's kind of our own Wrigleyville. It's a very dense neighborhood. And uh, single-family for the most part, though there are some duplexes and and quads there.
Tom, you're gonna have to finish up.
Okay, and so the concern on density is that if AT&T, Eastman and Village Bank all get built per uh what they could do. This little stretch would be the densest part of the entire town. And somehow that doesn't feel right either. If you have a master plan, that doesn't feel like this neighborhood should be. Where the densest population is. So with that, again, thank you all for amazing, uh, good work and thoughtful consideration. Much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else in the audience?
Mayor, there are a few people who have asked to speak.
Okay. Oh, who else is ready? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Just give us your names again for the record.
Bruce Adriani.
Uh, Stephen Masuda, his attorney. Uh, we were just curious because we've been uh. In receipt of the information about all of this and we're talking about parcel six, yes, thank you very much. Um, could we see the zoning map for a second, Charles? Thank you. It 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 seems a little bit odd, maybe it's a hangover from. Uh, the days of uh Pat publications, not sure, but we were curious. Uh, why the R six ends at three oh seven and doesn't extend. At least coincident with the other portion of to the north, um, which is what? Is that R six also? R seven? Um, or at least not the the whole north end of the the block because right now i- in the future. In terms of looking at what we might wanna be able to do there, um, we're just concerned that somehow i- it doesn't. Complement some of the other blocks. We've seen the ends of the blocks that seem to be all one district. And it just seems an opportunity to create one district or one zoning district across the entire block. Is there any particular reason why this particular block ends where it does?
Mr. Perkins, do you have any response to that?
Uh, I think what Mr. Masuda is talking about is this piece here. Asking why the R six doesn't extend uh to what Mitchell, I think that is.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, typically you would not have your zoning, you know, across the street. It would usually be, whoops, along the back lot lines. Um, so that's that's probably why it was set up that way. And probably don't want your R six intrusion further into the residential neighborhood. Those are, yeah, everything else west is is single-family homes. You know, my guess is, you know, many, many years ago, the multifamily was to go all the way to Ridge. And it was gonna go to all the way to Euclid. It was a much larger area. The 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 original vision for downtown was it was gonna be much, much bigger. And over the years, that's kinda been contracted and it could be a holdover from that, but I'm just guessing.
Any thoughts?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is Sarah McKinney.
Hi, everyone. I just wanna um second Tom's comments about uh the improvements that he was talking about, and I did have some questions about density. Um, I had asked if someone could explain how many units might actually be on Village Bank or AT&T at some point. Is there a way to figure that out?
Mr. Mr. Perkins, can you respond to that?
Is that part of a different process or?
Um, well, it's based upon land area and square footage per unit, so it's it's kinda complicated.
So it just depends on the type of of unit mix, but. Right.
On the Village Bank parcel, there there could be, if it were, if it was all hundred percent two-bedroom units, it could be over two hundred units.
Okay.
But usually it's a mix of one, two, and three and each.
Right.
Each unit requires a different land area, so it's.
Right.
It's hard to calculate without a real proposal.
Sure, of course. Is there a way to set guidelines on what we wanna see there? Like. Maybe we wanna mix of housing. If Eastman is mostly like the very small studios on one bedrooms, is it worthwhile to investigate like? What it could be there? What do we wanna see?
So wha- what we've seen over time is, you know, these developments, as we talked about earlier, are very difficult to finance and build.
Right.
And having gone through that with the gateway development on the south side of town that they got their financing to start construction. It's it's all based upon, you know, the market need.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, customer choice, and so that does change over time.
Right.
So for example, Hancock Square, they have much larger units.
Right.
Developer would not typically build units that size today, um, because that's not what the demand is, so they're smaller units. Um, and and so, but that could change in, you know, another ten years' time. Who knows what the the market would demand at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else in the audience? Mr. Whistler.
Good evening, Mayor Hayes and trustees. I'm Bob Whistler, twenty-one ninety-two North Charter Point Drive in Arlington Heights. Uh, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, I am the manager of four hundred and three eighty West Northwest Highway LLC. Which owns the properties at four hundred through four twenty-four and three eighty West Northwest Highway. We purchased the four hundred property in November of twenty sixteen and the three eighty building in March of twenty nineteen. The four hundred property is seventy-six years old, uh, was built in nineteen forty-eight as a car dealership. The three eighty building was built sometime in the nineteen eighties. In February twenty seventeen, we started discussions and had meetings with the planning department to redevelop the four hundred property. We performed market studies, traffic studies, had neighborhood meetings, and an early review of our project. We requested R seven zoning, which was consistent to the Arlington Gardens apartments across the street and the adjacent property. In our minds, the village, staff, and neighborhood were all negative to the project at that time. We listened and we moved on. We've operated our property and purchased the adjacent three eighty automotive building since then. Now, in December twenty twenty-three, apartments are approved on Eastman Street. A third of a mile away from our property. After several meetings, public and neighborhood comments and variations, the project is approved. Nice development, good developer. I then received notification from the village of a red flag resolution. And a request to meet with the the planning department. We had a nice meeting in March and a recent meeting with Charles and Michael. To review the resolution and proposed amendment, I also appeared at the plan commission meeting in August. My question was and continues to be, what problem are we trying to solve? Why are we even involved? I feel like we are collateral damage from the Eastman Project discussions. I ended our first meeting with Michael uh in uh the spring by telling him, whatever you do. Please don't hurt us and our investment. Now you want to amend the comprehensive plan to downzone my back from B three and R seven to R six. Downzone my front from B three to B two and evaluate changing the zoning code. These changes hurt us, not help. Less uses and units, less property value. The red flag resolution is only in the best interests of the adjacent neighbors. This is and was an exercise to appease the neighbors. How many red flag resolutions are there in Arlington Heights? Last one, if any. I oppose the amendment to the comprehensive plan as it relates to our properties. I also oppose evaluating a change in zoning. You might think a change in the comprehensive plan won't hurt us. Well, as was stated earlier. It's a roadmap to what the village wants to see. Tenants and developers pay attention to these changes. They also are aware of red flags, which by definition means danger. We have lost two tenants since the red flag resolution and soon to be a third with no current prospects. Do you think this is a coincidence? I think not. We all know the nineteen forty-eight former car dealer at a stoplight corner on Route fourteen. At the gateway to downtown Arlington Heights needs to be redeveloped at some time.
Bob, you're gonna have to finish up.
These changes will hurt that potential in the future. Charles mentioned Jim Bertucci's question about R three. If a developer comes in, can they redo it under R three? I'm sorry, under B three zoning. Charles said if it's code compliant and has no variations, there's no issue. The problem is any new development under B three with new setbacks, State Road fourteen. And the railroad and parking requirements, anything is gonna need variations. That's the problem and it's gonna revert to the new comprehensive plan, which is downzoned me. It's obvious we have been singled out and I would suggest you tap the brakes. And not approve the proposed amendment or at least remove our properties from consideration. We are and have been good owners, have always cooperated with staff. And plan to work together in the future. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Whistler. Anybody else in the audience? Yeah, please. Yep.
It's okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, back again. Elena Coghlan, one twenty-one West Fremont. Um, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and um for having us and giving us a chance to hear our voice. As you know, um, our struggle with the Eastman Project was an uphill battle to protect our neighborhood. We spent birthdays, graduations, due dates, in my case. And so much of our lives fighting and fighting, going through this process, trying to amend an enormous building that was gonna be planted in the middle of our neighborhood. We had a strong neighborhood showing early on, but our neighborhood is tired. We missed a lot of life collaborating. And working on the Eastman Project together to make it a better fit for Arlington Heights. We are the few left fighting for the Arlington Heights that we love so dearly, the village of Arlington Heights, not the city of Arlington Heights. We are asking you to please get creative and protect our neighborhood who continues to invest so much in your community. Thank you for giving us a dog in the fight with your suggestions for the Eastman Project. We really got the attention of the of the developer. And for the first time, made some real changes that impressed the neighborhood. We were, for the most part, really pleased with the end results and we can't wait to see it be built. The first time I spoke at Village Hall, I was eleven years old. A funeral home was trying to build a crematory down the street from my childhood home in Arlington Heights. I heard my dad wa- working on what he was gonna say and I decided to get involved. The neighbors spoke, the trustees changed their vote from twelve to zero to nine to three, voting the crematory down after hearing from the community. Mayor Mulder asked me to run for mayor of Arlington Heights one day at that time. She never once made me feel like my voice didn't matter or that I was just one family or one household. That didn't matter in the grand scheme of businesses and the village making money. To this day, I really feel like I'm part of something special. This was a life-changing day for me and seeing how powerful small government can be. I just knew that when we got the Eastman Project in front of the Board of Trustees, you would help us and you absolutely did. Most of you chose your residence back when I was ele- when I was, all of you chose the residence when I was eleven and most of you chose the residence during the Eastman Project. Please help us find a way to protect our community, help us decrease the height, add some more green space, decrease the density so our tiny little neighborhood doesn't sink. When speaking about density, it's not just traffic and affordable housing. It's pets, people, trash. Beer bottles, empty alcohol containers and bags of dog poo that I clean out of the parking lot that I live next to. It's also Memorial Park, um, where, which has bricks of both my World War Two Marine grandparents. It's a place where you can sit and reflect in peace. Thank you so much to staff for putting together this plan and thank you to the trustees for really thinking through any way that you can protect your people.
I do remember that vote, Elena, when you were eleven and so, uh, thank you for coming back. Anyone else in the audience?
I have a, oh, I thought I came late, so maybe it's.
But it's not on this agenda item, right?
Uh, something different, yes.
No, okay. All right, anyone else in the audience on this agenda item? Seeing none, then I'll come back to the audience. Charles, if you could put up that suggested motion, do you have it on a, on the monitor? I know we've got it in front of us, but.
Yes, it's uh multiple pages, so it includes the attachments, um, the motion here.
Do you, do you have it? Oh, there it is right there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's just the first item and then I've got pages for each subsequent one.
Okay, I just, I don't wanna, I don't want somebody to have to read that whole.
Mayor, what you could do is move to approve the ordinance. The ordinance contains all of these amendments.
Yeah, so move the mo- correct motion would be motion to approve the ordinance.
Correct.
With all the amendments.
The ordinance contains all the amendments, correct.
All right, back to the board for a discussion or a motion. Trustee Bertucci.
Can we f- focus in on um the property Mr. Whistler was talking about for a moment? I I just wanna get some clarification. Okay, so tell me, we're going from B what to B what?
Uh, there's no change in the zoning.
I I understand that in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan at the top here, um, the northwest portion is designated commercial on the comprehensive plan. And then this piece here is designated high-density multifamily. The proposal is to change the commercial to moderate-density multifamily. And to change the high-density multifamily to moderate-density multifamily.
Okay, what about the this the red area? Are we changing the B? I thought I heard Mr. Uh, Whistler say that we're changing. Something from B six to B seven?
No, there's no, there's no change in the zoning, um, and then the only.
Comprehensive plan.
The only change is is just this north uh piece behind, the back of the property.
Okay.
The the front, there's no proposed changes. We.
Okay.
We felt the B three zoning and the commercial designation on the comprehensive plan was most appropriate for now. And if and when that site redevelops, then that that would get looked at at that time.
Okay, okay, Bo- Bob, did I, is that com- is that match with what you were talking about? I I. I I thought, could, would you mind coming up again, just for, okay, cuz I I I've been hearing a disconnect between you two guys.
So is the front piece on the comprehensive plan?
Bob, you're gonna have to take in the microphone, please.
Is the front piece that's now B three and the comprehensive plan, is it going to B two?
No, it's staying commercial.
Okay, so the back half is gonna go from B three and R seven. To R six.
It would go, uh, yeah, I mean, in in reality, yes.
In the comprehensive plan.
I mean, it's it's, we're not changing the zoning again, but it goes from commercial. And high-density residential multifamily to moderate-density multifamily.
Correct. And the front, comprehensive plan.
No change.
Doesn't change, although what can I build on the front? But you and I have talked about that before, so. My understanding was that was going to be two. Was that discussed before?
There was, uh, in December, there was, um. It was, the the recommendation was to evaluate whether rezoning made sense. We evaluated it. And at the beginning of the meeting, I mentioned this property, it doesn't make sense because it would render it. You wouldn't be able to re-tenant it. It's got all overhead doors. It's set up as as an auto use, so. The existing structure makes most sense to stay B three, be in auto use. If it redevelops in the future. No matter what the zoning is or the designation. If it redevelops in the future, no matter what the zoning is or the designation, there's going to be an application and a petition to, you know, go before the board
And variations.
Probably, yeah, just like in 2018, yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's... Thank you for coming up.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Trustee Shirley, did you have some? Okay. All right, we do have a suggested motion. And again, I... It's been said... It was said at the Plan Commission this past night here this evening that these are, in fact, just guidelines, it's a comprehensive plan. So we're not making any zoning changes whatsoever. So a developer can come forward with whatever they want to come forward with, and we'll use the comprehensive plan as a guideline, but... And so I feel comfortable with the suggested motion and with the unanimous recommendation of the Plan Commission based on that. So, do we have a motion? Trustee Baldino?
Sure, I'd make a motion. I would move to approve the ordinance for PC 24-02 to amend the comprehensive plan and portions of the 2007 Downtown Master Plan to include the amendments listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Baldino, said by Trustee Dunnington. Further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Let's take a roll call.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Labeds?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Tinalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Okay, thanks, everybody, for your input and throughout this process. I know the neighborhood's been very involved. We appreciate their input in this red flag ordinance as well, and so thank you all. And thanks to the staff, especially, I know, all of you guys, Michael and Michael and Charles and your whole team, who's been very involved in this process, so we very much appreciate your help.
I'll pass that on to all the staff that worked on this. They did a great job. Thank you.
They did, they did. Okay, we have one other item under new business. That's the modifications to the zero-interest loan program. Mr. Recklaus or Mr. Perkins?
Um, I believe...
Or Mr. Murdis?
Mr. Murdis is going to present this one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss potential modifications to the interest-free loan program. Unlike past modifications that have been done to this program, rather than tweaks that have been used to sort of incentivize more people to utilize it, instead, this intends to keep the current program but create two new options or pathways for property owners and business owners that, in the past, have not met eligibility criteria despite their interest in the program. And I just want to provide a little bit of background and context on the program. So the program was initiated by village staff and the Arlington Economic Alliance as an opportunity to attract new businesses, but also support existing businesses in the community and help them continue to grow and reinvest in themselves. Between 2013 and 2015, the original criteria was primarily a $10,000 loan capped that would... Could be repaid up to five years and cover 50% of project costs. Also collateral was required in terms of a lien on real estate to help ensure repayment of the loan and ensure security for the village. But between 2013 and 2015, only one application was approved. And so in order to try and further attract the businesses to utilize the program, the Economic Alliance recommended an increase from $10,000 to $20,000 for the max loan amount. That was approved by the village board, and that did help because over the next three and a half years, 10 businesses utilized the program. Now, in 2020, obviously, COVID came, and with that, restrictions on businesses, of course, across the country, Arlington Heights being no exception. And so the village board, among other efforts to help support our business community at the time, approved a COVID relief version that was temporary for use of the zero-interest loan funds. 15 businesses took advantage of that, and the key difference between that program and the current loan program was primarily, one, the loan was capped at $10,000. But secondly, and importantly, instead of requiring collateral in the form of a lien on real estate, a personal guarantee was required, which would allow it to open up to business owners that perhaps didn't own real estate and could not provide collateral. Now, from 2020 to 2022, only two standard applications were approved, and so staff went back to the Economic Alliance to request additional changes to, once again, reinvigorate interest in the program. And what came from that was an increase of the maximum loan amount to $25,000, an increase of the loan coverage amount to 75%, an inclusion of a forgivable provision, which I'll explain in more detail in a little bit, and also consideration by the village board of a larger loan request over $25,000 on an individual case-by-case basis. Since those have been approved, four interest-free loans have also been approved, so this did have a positive impact on that. Now, before I get into the other modifications, the current funding mechanisms, how the loan is funded. Primarily through rebates and application fees from the Cook County Class 6 and Class 7 Property Tax Abatement Programs. The Class 6 being industrial, the Class 7 being the commercial version of that. We would strike agreements with the properties in Arlington Heights that are approved for those to rebate over a period of time 10% of the property tax savings back into the zero-interest loan fund. And that is also compounded, obviously, by repayments of existing loans that are out there and the interest-bearing accounts that the village has. The zero-interest loan fund is one that gets a share of that as well, too. And so those form kind of the basis of the funding for the zero-interest loan program. And then how the loans are reviewed and approved currently. They start administratively. The application is submitted to the Planning Community Development Department. We review to completion, and then that is provided to the loan committee. The loan committee is made up of staff of the planning and finance departments, but also two members of the Economic Alliance, both the finance and the commercial real estate representatives on the commission. Assuming approval, a loan agreement then is filed with the county recorder's office. The lien is obviously lifted once the loan is repaid in full, and then, once the warrant register is signed off on, the loan payment is dispersed to the business. So what does that mean in terms of where the loan program is at today? The maximum loan amount is $25,000 for tangible improvements to business or property. It can be repaid up to five years, or the duration of lease, whichever is less, in quarterly invoices. We require the collateral I mentioned before, typically a lien on real estate because it does not depreciate typically beneath the value of the loan, and loan coverage is up to 75% of the project costs. I mentioned the forgivable provision earlier. If a Arlington Heights business has been operating within the community for at least three years and, under the current program, applies and repays the first 80% on time, they would be eligible to have that final 20% forgiven to them. And as I mentioned before, review and approval is done by our zero-interest loan committee. So as of the start of the program back in 2013, we've had 18 different businesses approved for loans. Of those 18, 2/3 were Arlington Heights businesses already operating within the community. For examples of how the loan funds have been used, recently, a medical office used it for interior build-out. A restaurant used it for the development of an outdoor patio area. Another business used it to replace their HVAC system. So it definitely has covered the gamut of how the loan fund has been used. Now, I'm not asking today for the board to change this program. What I'm asking for is the consideration of two additional options for businesses that have not traditionally been able to utilize this program. And two recurring things that have come up over the past 10, 11 years are this. On a smaller scale, the business owner has not had property on which they could place a lien and therefore would not be eligible because they did not have adequate collateral. On the other side, the $25,000 maximum amount for larger projects has been considered something of a drop in the bucket. It just doesn't adequately cover and is not worth the effort to apply for the program, nor to also place lien on real estate. These two options seek to essentially alleviate that and open up this program to more applicants. What we call the micro-loan concept, smaller projects. Think new signage and awnings. Think conversion of ADA... Conversion of washrooms to AD accessibility, for some examples. The maximum loan amount would be capped at $5,000. Repayment would be via two annual invoices. So assuming a $5,000 loan, one year later, they'd be invoiced $2,500, the following year, the other $2,500, at which point it would be paid off. The big change here is the security, like with the COVID relief loan program, would be in the form of a personal guarantee instead of collateral, which would open it up to these smaller businesses that otherwise could not previously apply. And then the loan would cover up to 50% of project costs. There would not be a forgivable provision under this instance, and as with the current loan program, the loan committee would review for approval. Now, on the other instance of the projects that the loan program hasn't been valuable enough, the mega-loan project, program, large-scale projects. Think internal demolition and interior build-out of a significant property, like an industrial property. Think energy efficiency improvements, a whiter green roof or installation of EV charging stations. Significant rehab to facades. These are all programs that might be more valuable with a loan program or options such as this. The maximum loan under this instance would be $100,000, but a minimum cost would be $250,000 for the project. That would be one, to ensure that the applicant has financing lined up for the bulk of the project, and secondly also, so that the village is not taking on the bulk of the risk and responsibility for the project. Repayment, like currently, would be done in quarterly invoices for up to five years of the duration of lease, whichever is less, and again, collateral in the form of a lien on real estate would be required. The loan would cover up to 25% of the project cost, very much for the same reason as the max loan and minimum project cost, mitigating the village's risk on that. And the forgivable provision would also apply to this, a 20% max meeting select criteria. I'm going to discuss that in a second, but just really quickly, review and approval. Again, the loan committee would review, but recommend approval or rejection to the village board, and it would be up to the board's discretion whether or not to formally approve or reject the request. So basically, requests over $25,000 but under $100,000. And then I mentioned the stipulations for potential forgiveness. So it would also be an applicant who's been in and are operating within the community for over three years. The first 80% would obviously have to be repaid on time to be forgiven the maximum 20%. Additionally, and staff and the loan committee will monitor these based upon current economic situations, the actual response in terms of applicants. But the goal is to have an occupancy rate that at least meets or exceeds 85% of the gross leasable area. So not the number of tenant spaces, if it's, say, a shopping center, but the actual square footage of the leasable space. And then the other key aspect would be considering having the share of sales tax and food and beverage taxes that go to the village would, at the time of forgiveness, need to exceed what it was at the time the loan was requested to show that there's sort of ongoing growth and reinvestment in those businesses as well. So that's essentially the background on what the stipulations would be. Here is just a chart that, again, gives an overview of all the different programs. Obviously, the max loan amounts are the key differences, but the standard loan and mega-loan could continue to be repaid up to five years, while the micro-loan would be maxed at two. Coverage would vary among the three programs. And then again, the standard and mega-loan would still require the collateral, but the micro-loan would just require the personal guarantee. And again, the loan committee would review all applications. It's just for the mega-loan program. It would ultimately require the board's approval before the check could be dispersed. And then no forgivable provision for the micro-loan, but for the standard and mega-loan, as I discussed before, certain criteria would have to be met to enable a potential 20% amount of forgiveness, assuming the first 80% is paid off on time. And then again, both village staff, and this was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Arlington Economic Alliance, are seeking tonight the board's approval to essentially, again, not alter the current standard loan program. That would continue to exist, but ultimately, the creation of these micro-loan and mega-loan programs to hopefully grow this program and allow other businesses and property owners that might not be able to take advantage of it before to now be able to do so. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, well, thanks, Michael, for the great presentation, a good explanation and justification, and we appreciate you bringing this forward. Appreciate you having the Economic Alliance weigh in. I think that was very valuable. I see they had a unanimous recommendation
Correct.
To approve the modifications, and so I think this is a great use of the available funds. I see we got $1.4 million in the fund at this point, and so it's a great way to increase participation in the program, and I would certainly encourage concurrence. So anybody? Trustee Bertucci?
First of all, I agree with everything the mayor said and appreciate Michael, staff, and everybody on this. I think it's a great program. I'm just... I just want to get a full overview. Who's on the loan committee?
Sure, the loan committee is typ... It's typically me. It's a finance representative, typically the assistant director, so it'd be Mary Ellen Juarez. And then whoever, at the time, on the Economic Alliance is the financial representative, and whoever is the commercial real estate representative. So that's varied over the years. Currently, that's Michael Mulder is the finance rep, and John Taliopoulos is the current commercial real estate rep.
Okay, all good people. And then my other question is, in the... This so-called loan underwriting scenario, do we get credit reports and everything?
Absolutely, yes. We...
Check for tax liens?
Check credit reports on anyone who has 20% or more stake in ownership of the business, yes. And we also look at things like business debt, net worth. So we look at financials as well, yes.
Okay, okay, great. And I would imagine if we have a bank or somebody like Michael Mulder on there that were pretty much following protocol from a bank underwriting procedure. Okay, and then the... Just the last question I have is the village board approval. What will... On the mega-loan, what would be brought before us? Are we going to get, like, a whole packet of information that the loan committee would get? Or some summary, or what would come to us?
The intent would be a summary. The loan committee would review the bulk of all that background information, and there would be a summary brought to the board.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there questions or comments? Trustee Grassi?
I'm ready to make a motion, but I'd like to first... You know what? I'll go ahead and make a motion, and then we can comment after that. I move to concur with the staff's recommendation and the Arlington Economic Alliance motion to create the micro-loan, capped at $5,000 per loan, and mega-loan, capped at $100,000 per loan, options of the zero-interest loan program, and authorize staff to implement the loan program's criteria.
Second.
Who was the second? Trustee Schwingback? Motion by Trustee Grassi, second by Trustee Schwingback. Further questions or comments? Trustee Grassi?
Thank you. I had a question. First, I wanted to thank you for really creatively responding to our businesses' needs for those unique requests for loans. I think it really is showing just how important our businesses, small businesses, are and for us to work together in making them successful. So I really appreciate taking a look at the unique requests and adjusting this way. Did I hear mention that so far there have been 18 loans made?
That's correct. There have been 18 under what I'd consider the standard program, and then outside of that, there were 15 during the COVID relief temporary program.
Okay, right, and that was not the PPP loans? That was something different?
Correct, that was something we did, yeah.
Okay, and then are you... Are you thinking we would have more loans? Or this is... Would be more open to the unique requests?
Yeah, I would think there would be more interest generated, especially since these were kind of recurring themes. And in fact, in regards to both the micro and mega-loan, there are specific instances where I've been in communication with business owners that have not been able to. So hopefully, they will be able to take advantage of this program right off the bat, yeah.
Well, I think this is a very innovative and creative response to the businesses' needs, and I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Schwingback?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, I'm all in favor of this. I think it's wonderful to help the businesses, and as we've talked many times, it's really our businesses that create the sales tax dollars and whatnot that really help our village, you know, with our entire budget. I guess my questions to you is, so you've approved, you said, 18?
That's correct, since implementation back in 2013.
Have we turned anybody down?
There was one that was turned down back towards the beginning of the program. There were significant... were significant concerns with things like credit history, and so that was the one, but otherwise, the rest of them have been approved.
So it, it, it's obvious that we're trying to help the businesses and promote more businesses to take advantage of this, to, to better their business. If we didn't do this, and we just kept it the way that it is today, are we losing businesses that want to come to Arlington Heights? Is somebody saying, boy, I can't make it work, I'm not gonna come here, or are there people whose businesses are maybe declining because they, they can't get a loan?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think it's less that businesses say, well, since I can't get the loan, I'm just not gonna come here, and more that businesses would like to reinvest in their business and do something tangible to improve it, and maybe just don't have a, we'll call a traditional option to do that. And I think that's kind of been the bigger audience for a program like this.
So, so do you think this is going to drastically maybe take care of some of our vacancies that we have?
Yeah, I think in a lot of ways it can, and another thing, too, is it doesn't necessarily have to be a business owner, if a property owner, for example, wants to reinvest in their tenant spaces or improve how the shopping center or multi-tenant building looks, this is another channel for that, too, as well, so I think that will help in that regard.
And that would really help them get, get the tenants then as well.
That's, that's my belief, yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Labads?
I just want to also say thank you very much, Michael, for bringing this forward and for working with the Economic Alliance on this. I know sometimes there's been discussion that the Alliance has felt like they, they're, they're not sure that they're playing a role, they, they're not sure they're being heard. I think this, it's obvious they are in, in this case, and I was very excited when I started reading my board packet and read about this, and I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to, you know, hearing some reports of, you know, the businesses that have been able to expand or redo or whatever with the loans that they receive. Thanks.
Anything else from the board? Trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, mayor. Michael, I've said this to you before and to others, I think you're an awesome speaker, an awesome communicator. The way you presented this today, it makes a lot of sense to me, and I know it does to everybody else here, too. I'll put on my trustee Bertucci hat for a second. When you speak of a 25% number of the loan for the, the mega-loan, that would mean that if it's $100,000 that we're giving them, it's a $400,000 project, right?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
So that's substantial, I mean, that's, that's a good project to get something done, whether it's a facade, rehab, or something internal, like you mentioned before, those are good projects. So it's a gap that you're covering here, I think that's, that's really great, and, and even the little ones as well, too, like you mentioned, awnings or whatever. Can this be used for technology, too, or is it only, you know, hard construction? Like, you mentioned air conditioning or HVAC.
Yeah, I can see absolutely technological upgrades. One of the early applicants was trying to improve their purchase system and their membership system, that was a technological tool, I guess, that they utilized the program for. So I think the big thing is, we don't want the loan fund to be used for payroll, for, for taxes, insurance payments, marketing fees, but I think a technological improvement would be a tangible improvement.
And, and all of it reinvesting in what they've got going there already, so I, I think it's great, I just keep, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board? Anything from the audience on this? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thanks again, Michael, nice job.
Thank you very much.
All right, that is all of our new business. I do have a, a blue card from an individual who missed citizens to be heard, and Radomir has been very patient in waiting, and so I'm gonna give you three minutes.
Well, if you don't have time.
Radomir, come on.
I'll come prepared.
Oh, you gotta come forward, though, you gotta come forward.
Yes.
And please give us your name. And you've got three minutes.
Yes, my name is Radomir Baich, or short, Rod, okay? I had a, a couple of questions to follow up on previous meeting. One of them was, Mr. Mayor, a few years ago, there was, I'm not throwing any board members under the tank, but it was a property that was owned by a village, and they didn't approve some kind of building, okay? And at that time, you are not happy, so what happened with that building, or anything is developed on that property?
I have no idea what you're talking about. Well, why don't you tell us your concerns, I know you have a number of concerns.
Okay, concern, a number of concern, the other one was, is it a property that a village owns that can be developed, say, a new restaurant, a new generation with, with a new approach towards McDonald or Burger King, okay? So that property can be leased and money invested to build a new generation restaurant? So, I, I, maybe I'm not explaining correctly, but I don't want my kids' inheritance money to be spent the way they want it, I want to spend their money how I wanted to develop a, a new business. Other one, third one was about increase on the water or sewage or whatever it was, but everybody, village, want money to tax our senior citizens, we are only getting 2% increase, which is, on average, maybe $30, $35, so the village will take their part, Cook County wanna take their part, Medicare Part B, they will take part, so we are left with nothing, basically, okay? One more, I, I still have a couple of seconds. I was not sure which overtime, Mr. Mayor, was for firefighters or for ambulance employee, there was too much. Why firefighters cannot work, say, eight-hour shifts, so there is no overtime? That's my concern, okay? So.
All right, anything else, Rod?
There'd be kinda everything that I was going to address.
Okay, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, it's kinda late now.
All right, thanks for your patience, and thank you for coming to me.
I will come on time next time.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me time, because she is trying to me that it's supposed to be done in the weekend.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, is there any other business to come before the village board? Seeing none, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move approval, or, or mean adjournment.
By trustee Labads, seconded by trustee Schwingback, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for joining us tonight.
It's late.